National Grid Verizon, Harvard Street at Granger Street. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So is there anybody that would like to speak in favor or against? So seeing none, I'd like to close this public hearing. It's still 6:30. At 6:30 and at 6:35, we will begin our regular council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. We'll call the Monday, April 1st, 2024 City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Counsel Ash.
Present.
Counsel Campbell.
Present.
Counsel Devine.
Present.
Counsel DeBona.
Present.
Counsel Harris.
Present.
Counsel Liang.
Counsel McCarthy.
Present.
Counsel Minton.
Present.
President Kane.
Present.
Eight members.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Please use this moment as you will. Please turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
Honoring of Ava Bryan, North Quincy High School Girls varsity basketball senior captain.
And to honor Ava Bryan tonight will be Counselor-at-Large Scott Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very happy to be here tonight to introduce and to acknowledge the great achievement of 1,000 points for Ava Bryan. She was a basketball star for North Quincy High School this year and has been for the past four years. She has become the 11th player in North Quincy High School basketball history to score 1,000 points, and she is actually number four on the list all time. 1,151 points, an amazing accomplishment that is highlighted all throughout her entire career. She has been a consistent incredible player. I'll just highlight, thank you to Coach Cunningham for supplying all the great stats here, but she's a four-year starter and a three-year captain on the varsity basketball team. She scored 404 points in 22 games and led the Patriot League in scoring her senior year. She scored a record 56-point field goals this year alone, which ironically is 56 more three-pointers than Chris Walker scored in his whole career.[224.01][224.01](Laughter). She broke the school record for threes, 139 career three-pointers. The previous record was 68, which is enormous. She had 165 rebounds this year, and she scored her 1,000th career point in her 74th career game. She finished career with 1,151 points. Career high, 32 points against Situate this year. Eleven games this season, she scored 20-plus points. She had seven double-doubles for her senior year, and she was a Boston Globe Girls Basketball Player of the Week, Patriot League All-Star three times, and a Patriot League All-scholar second in basketball and volleyball, where she was also captain, and she was named today as also last year. And as her career goes, it's incredible what she had, but I guess in every, there's probably moments that I think just needs to be acknowledged. And this first in career highlight, I think, stands out the best was February 18th, 2022. Quincy was playing North, and North had a perfect season going, and they came into Quincy High School. And as they entered the fourth quarter, Quincy High School had a four-point lead, 32 to 28. And there's been a lot of games like the Willis Reed game and the Michael Jordan flu game. This one was Quincy's going to break the perfect season for North Quincy this year, but it quickly turned into the Ava Bryan, where she scored 16 points in the fourth quarter alone. Seven minutes left, she scored 16 points, single-handedly brought them back, and she completed the Ava Bryan game, and North went on to compete, have the perfect season, regular season, and went on to make it to the Elite Eight, where they lost to a, did Nord win? They won the whole thing, yes, so Nord won the whole thing. Really, just, she's an exceptional student athlete, 4.7 GPA, and she plans to go to Phillips Exeter for a year to play basketball, for a gap year, and she comes from an amazing family, the Bryan-Sullivan-Flinn and White families. They are cornerstone families for the city itself, and I think it's very much appropriate that we honor her today, Ava Bryan on her 1,151st point. Presented to Ava Bryan, Captain, North Quincy High School Girls varsity basketball, an appreciation and recognition of an outstanding season and reaching 1,151 career points. You have been a role model and an inspiration. We salute you for not only your athleticism and pursuit of excellence, but your sportsmanship. We extend our sincere congratulations for this tremendous achievement and wish you continued success. Congratulations.[406.12][406.12](Applause). Do you want all this?
Yeah, sure. First of all, Ava, congratulations. I don't know if you want to say a few words.
No. Okay.[421.22][421.22](Laughter).
But otherwise, we'll take a momentary recess so we can take a picture with everyone. Okay?
(Laughter).
Okay, let's get back to business. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2024-034, appropriation for community preservation, 92,500, for Quincy Homestead wrought iron fence restoration project and Adams Crypt handicap ramp.
Okay. The President recognizes Mr. Walker.
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you. Before you tonight are two small orders from the Community Preservation Fund, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. As this body knows, and as Counselors Campbell and Counselors DeBona know particularly well because they've served for so long on, the Community Preservation Committee, we traditionally do CPC appropriations during the budget cycle. These particular two projects, they're relatively minor in nature, and there is some exigency to both of them. One is the restoration of the wrought iron fence at the Dorothy Quincy Homestead, and we'd like to be able to get that moving, because there's a small component of that project that does have a public safety component to it. There was a damaged piece of the fence that we'd like to be able to get replaced, and the Colonial Dams, of course, would like to get able to get replaced as soon as possible. And the second project is the completion of the ADA compliance accessibility project at the Adams Crypts across the street here. The project is coming to an end. We have the material in the package relative to the need for this to get moving now. Commissioner Heinz is here to answer any questions on that, but what this will do is provide the final access point to the ADA accessibility project that has been going on for a couple of years now. It's going to be a great success, provide every member of our community access to the historic treasure at the ground level of the Church of the Presidents across the street. Again, Mr. Heinz is here for that particular project, and I can answer any questions on the wrought iron fence, if anyone has any.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The President recognizes Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as Mr. Walker alluded to, the reasoning behind this, Commissioner Paul Heinz came into the Community Preservation Committee, and we got a unanimous vote to bring this out a little early. Unfortunately, if we waited till June with all the other appropriations of the Community Preservation Funds, this funding might not be approved and be available until July, maybe even closer into August. If you look outside the City Hall here, in the crypts, we have the fencing up, and we kind of need, time is of the essence for this particular project with this $75,000, as well as in the Adams Crypt handicap ramp. And then on the other side, $17,500 for an accident that was done over at the, our Homesteads, Dorothy Homesteads. So time is of the essence for this, Counselors. The Community Preservation was unanimous vote to approve this, and I thought it was the right, proper thing to do with the administration to bring it in tonight. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding.
Okay, motion to approve made by Counsel DeBona, seconded by Counsel Devine on the motion. Any questions for Commissioner Heinz?
Oh, sorry. Am I ready?
Yeah, you're good.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to say it, but I wanted to commend the Community Preservation Committee. I've sat in on a few of their meetings. I watched Commissioner Heinz talk about, to them, but they, they take their job very seriously, and they have great passion, so they, I just wanted to take a moment and let you know how hard they work for us, and they do their diligence, and this is, like Counselor DeBona said, it's important also to get the fence done sooner than later, because the weather is an issue for the wrought iron fence, the way they scrape it and clean it and paint it. So I just wanted to take that moment and say that they do a great job.
Thank you, Counsel Devine. Okay, there's a motion on the floor made by Counsel DeBona. Do you have a second? Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, 2024-035, appropriation for $7 million MSRF loan for fiscal year 25 sewer system improvements.
Thank you. The President recognizes Counsel McCarthy.
Yeah, just a motion to move that into the Finance Committee, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to move to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Ayes have it.
Madam Clerk, next. Uh, sorry?
Number three, 2024-036, appropriation for two.
Pardon me, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
If I may, there's apparently a presentation that we're going to run through, but this will be heard at Finance next week, but tonight we do have, who do we have here?
Joe Shea.
Our Commissioner of the Department of Public Works here to deliver a presentation on this, on this MSRF loan, correct? Okay. Is it also included, the next item? Okay.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, City Counselors. Yeah, before you this evening, you'll see three appropriation orders. With me this evening, City Engineer Paul Costello, and Joe Shea, and Olivia Vonden-Banken from Granite City Partners. Each April, this body receives from DPW a rolling capital improvement funding request for the upcoming construction season. For roadways and water mains, you have approved multi-year capital improvement programs, and most recently approved in the spring of 2021. However, our sewer and drainage projects are approved on a yearly basis. As we finalize our bids in preparation for the, for the summer of 2024, we are here with our yearly request to improve the infrastructure in our neighborhoods tonight. We know these requests will go before the Finance Committee, but I would like to take a few minutes to review the status of our citywide programs. As I discuss with the City Council, each time I'm at the podium, DPW systematically assesses and approves our infrastructure with an asset management-based approach, now using our enhanced GIS system for tracking and reporting. As most of you know, citywide, we have over 1,035 roadways totaling 257 miles, 304 miles of sidewalks, 240 miles of water main, 208 miles of sewers, 150 miles of drainage system with 188 outfalls, dozens of pump stations, water tanks, tide gates, and other fixed The mayor with this body's support has been pushing his aggressive plans to improve our neighborhoods and the associated infrastructure with programmatic year-to-year advancements. Since 2017, and including this coming construction season, with this council's approval, DPW will have repaired and improved 311 roadways totaling over 66 miles, over 1,500 spark repairs on roadways and sidewalks, more than 110 miles of new sidewalks. We replaced water mains in 204 roadways with almost 39 miles of new pipe. We repaired and lined sewers in over 441 roadways totaling over 53 miles of EPA-reported sewer improvements. The bottom line is that every neighborhood in our city has received improvements, and with this council's continued support, we will continue to see DPW's daily activities to improve our infrastructure. Each neighborhood will continue to benefit. As the city continues to advance our improvements, tonight we are introducing loan requests for sewer, lead-lined water service pipe replacement, and drainage improvements. The engineers will speak about the individuals' projects, but I do want to speak about our safe drinking water. The MWRA in the city have excellent, high-quality drinking water. We have received awards for our water system. We are continuously sampling and monitoring our water quality, and we annually improve the water mains in the public roadways. Tonight, you will hear about Mass DEP's mandate to locate and remove any remaining lead water services, which is a small diameter pipe between the public water main and the house located primarily or mostly on private property that enters the house at the water main, water meter, I'm sorry. We have almost 24,000 water services, and the vast majority contain no lead. There are less than 3% that have a suspicion of lead on the private property side, and we do not have records for what water service materials are. The lead pipe removal program that you will hear about tonight relates to identifying water services that do not have records and removing water pipes on private property which may have lead components. I will be turning the presentation over to Granite City Partners to review some of these technical details and the financial structure of the loan request. Thank you, and we will be available for questions following the presentations. Joe will speak to the first council autoappropriation for the $7 million state revolving fund
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Joseph Daniel Shea, one of the principals with Granite City Partners, an engineering and real estate firm right here in the downtown. We've been supporting the city of Quincy on infrastructure matters for over a decade now, and we're happy to speak with you this evening about this year's annual springtime rolling DPW council orders. I'm to speak on Order 24-35, which is an appropriation for $7 million of state revolving fund loans, which are low-interest loans that I'll speak about, and then we will do a deeper dive at the Future Finance Committee meeting. But Quincy has annually invested quite heavily in the sewer collection system. As the Commissioner had indicated, there's 208 miles of piping, sewer piping within the city, serving those 24,000 buildings. Some of those sewer pipes are over 100 years old. They all flow towards a high-level sewer which is along C Street. For those who don't know, the dike, the mound that runs parallel to C Street is actually a very large sewer that has collected all the sewage in Quincy and many other South Shore communities and brings it to the Nut Island Treatment Facility at the end of Howes Neck. Of Quincy's 208 miles of sewer, more than five of those miles are underwater during high tide. It's very important that the city continues to maintain and manage those sewers such that it keeps seawater out of the sewer system. We don't need to pay sewer rates to treat seawater, and at the same time, we need to make sure that sewage is not leaking out of those pipes and impacting our ponds, rivers, streams, and beaches. As part of that program, over the past five to six years, the city has very thoroughly mapped every neighborhood within the city. This graphic that you see at the bottom of the screen shows the Wallaston Beach area. There's Howes Neck is towards the right side of the graphic, and about 65% of the manholes in sewers have been investigated with TV cameras and other apparatus to make sure that they're being logged for the quality, the tightness, the operation, and the capacity. As you can see from the photo up top, which is along Blacks Creek, we have a lot of sewers that are in very environmentally sensitive areas, and we need to remain diligent in protecting our environment from sewage issues. The benefits of the sewer rehabilitation program are many. First off, it reduces inflow and infiltration, so rainwater and seawater leaking in. Again, it becomes very expensive to treat rainwater and seawater, so we want to keep only sewage in the sewer pipes. Certainly want to protect our beaches, our streams, and our rivers. So we do a sewer system evaluation every three years, where we drive a camera down each sewer pipe, which is the top graphic. May not be that pleasant to see, this is one of the more benign photos, but we drive a camera down each and every sewer pipe to ensure that we understand the structural integrity of the pipe, that there are no leaks, and we do it from the inside. That way, we don't have to dig up each and every road, we only have to address the roads where the sewer pipes have serious structural failures or capacity issues. This really reduces our reactive costs, the costs that we would come before you with some emergency orders, and it helps us with sewer collapses and overflows. It also allows us to prioritize the funds that are made available, so we can address the most important issues first. The sewer program also has split the city up into five different zones. Here, they're shown as colors. We're currently in the orange zone. The zones are based upon water quality impacts or our consent decree with the EPA, so this is driven by our U.S. EPA compliance requirements. That's one reason why you'll see us in all of your wards working on sewer every summer. We're very proud to say that last week, we were awarded a $7 million low-interest loan by the state. This was a competitive loan that the city applied for in August of 2023, and got the final award on March 26th, just last week. And it's a low-interest loan for the purposes of doing water quality improvements and sewer That loan, if approved, is going to be spent in a number of different neighborhoods. Here's a sampling of the neighborhoods that we're currently targeting. The manner in which these loans work is that the council approves them in the spring of one year, the design happens in the fall, and construction begins in the next year. So I want to be clear that this loan is for 2025 construction. This body approved the work that's currently going out to bid now last year through a state revolving low-interest loan. But the importance of this slide is that every neighborhood in the city has an opportunity for improvements, every ward has an opportunity for improvements. The benefits of the state revolving fund loan, which is administered by the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust and the Mass DEP, is that it's a low-interest loan paid off over 20 years, and Quincy has the opportunity to get principal forgiveness, meaning the approval of the $7 million through Finance Committee's approval in this body, then allows you to pay back less than $7 million. The city will get a 6.6% principal forgiveness, meaning $462,000 gets wiped out off the loan, so think of it as you're now borrowing just about $6.5 million. And Quincy is also a housing choice community, which lowers your low-interest rate from 2% to 1.5%, which effectively knocks off another 408, it says 400 here, but $400,000 off the loan. One item that we always want to be clear about is these loans are paid for by the Sewer Enterprise Fund. They are not paid for by the general tax rate. We will get, do a deeper dive on this at Finance Committee, but this would be the impact of the loans. This loan added on to the existing sewer debt service over time. As loans expire, you can see the sewer debt service falling off, and again, it's the Sewer Enterprise Fund that would pay for this loan. So tonight, Council Order Number 35 before you is for a $7 million loan authorization, and I would be happy to entertain any questions on this specific council order.
President recognizes Counsel Harris.
Thank you. Thank you for, Joe, for your, your presentation, and I hadn't seen this, and I don't know if it was sent to us, and I know I got my envelope for this, this week, tonight, but I'm not trying to, like, I only see, like, in Ward Six is streets between Bellevue and Waters Edge. I tried picking them out. There's going to be a pet peeve that you're going to hear about from me throughout the next upcoming weeks and months, is private roads. Are private roads included in this, in this, and are they being, you know, picked out of a hat? Is there something? Because, especially when I saw Bayside Road, I, I met on Saturday morning, I met I met with a group of neighbors, basically all the neighbors that ran from, along the beach from Hawkins all the way to, to the, to basically where the bend takes place on the beach, where the folks that deal with Orchard Beach, which is, folks say, this is a private road. They won't help us. And, but we have to deal with people parking. It's not private, so. And that's one of the, you know, in the future, in the future, I'm going to talk about, I'm going to have to talk about that because how can it be private if it's not? How can we change it? I've been told you can't change the law, or we can't even try to change the law. But we have private roads. I have a, I have a ton of them in Ward 6, and the roads are abominable. And, and the only reason why I'm even speaking to this, unfortunately, I can't be here. I wish, I'm not going to say I wish I wasn't going to Disney World with my two-year-old grandson because I can't wait to get out of Dodge, to be honest with you, after Saturday, after Saturday talking. And I was by myself, and I didn't have the answers. Tributary Streets to Bayside Road. I'm assuming those are the roads that lead down to Bayside Road. And, and but, so we're going to do work on the streets going down to Bayside Road. But we can't, we can't, you know, the answer I'm getting is we can't replace Bayside Road because of natural, natural water flow. But it's just, it's not going to make sense to these folks. You know what I mean? And I'm actually going to be calling for, with that group of people, I'm going to ask that the administration at least send somebody to the Kennedy Center and when, in May, somewhere around the first or second week of May, to speak to them because I didn't have the answers. And it really isn't fair that, that any ward counselor should have to, you know, you know, tell folk, have to be the bearer of bad news. The news is, is yep, it's private. The answer is usually it's a private road. You know, we don't have to do anything. But, so let me ask you, you know, this. What's the ratio of private roads and non-private? Because, you know, again, just that area there, there's all sorts of private roads that are in between. You know, when you're going down, there's got to be a whole, you know, a couple of them. I can't think of them off the top of my head, but if it goes any further and if it's all the way down from one end of Bayside Road to the other, there's a whole bunch. And I've even asked about a couple of the main roads that have, when I think of it, you know, this, Womback. I need something fixed there. And so my question is, is are private roads being fixed? You know, I know that, I think the number is there's 16 private roads in the city of Quincy that get their road twice a year graded, right? And the grading system that we're using isn't working. In fact, causes more problems than helps. And that's because I'm talking to the people and hearing them. And, and part of it was I wasn't being talked to. I was being talked at. So I'm not talking at anybody. I'm just asking, basically, right now, I'm waving the white flag. Private roads in this city, why are they, you know, why are they not going to be treated the same way? And how many are we going to be fixing? Because then I have to answer to the people that says, look at that, they're fixing that street, but they're not fixing mine. And I understand it's the drainage and the sewer pipes. And, and, and I think, I'm pretty sure we've paved some, some private roads. And so I don't, I can't go through, I think, would want, I don't know who has private roads. I only know mine. But it's, it's very frustrating, and the people are frustrated. And I know the people on Bayside Road are the highest paying, one of the highest paying taxpayers there. Yeah, they have a ward of you, but they, and they also have to deal with any, I'm not going to go there because I don't want to get a legal thing going that's going. But they also have to deal with the private, a beach that's not private. Boats coming in and out. I mean, off the, off, off the, right there at the bottom of Orchard Street, there's a half, I don't want to say that word. Let's just say it's a makeshift ramp. Where, you know, years ago, we got, and I got help from the administration to get it fixed or kind of have a temporary thing. But right now, my frustration level of communication right now is, is over the top. And, and that's kind of, if I don't have the communication, and we had, we have great communication. A thing that's coming up very soon after this. You've always been great, and you reached out to me and even answered me on Easter Sunday. So on, with something that's coming up. But I, I think that when, when we talk about this, I really wish that it could, next week, this could be tabled next week to, and have another, another meeting, finance meeting, so I could be able to get more information, be able to speak more to it. Because, again, I'd love to know, and I don't think you have the answer about the private roads, the ratio versus, are there going to be private roads in that area going into Bayside Road being fixed as Bayside Road is a private road? I looked at it, I saw it, I almost, I almost threw up because I know I'm going to, I'm going to take a lot of, I'm going to take a lot of, all right, I won't say that word. Joe, I, I love you, man. You're, you're great for listening to me, but.
Did you get that question?
I did, actually. Mr. President.
No, that's okay.
You're hearing more frustration from me.
No, I heard it, I felt it too. And I just want to clarify for the record, I misspoke. So this appropriation will not actually be on the Finance Committee meeting next week in the agenda.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, so you'll have a chance.
Thank you. This way, I can dig into it further.
All good, thank you. Are you all set, Counselor?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great.
I think I said enough.
Do you want to continue with the other two parts of your presentation? And then we can sort of summarize with some questions?
I would, I would like to answer that question, actually, just for clarity. And then I'd like to apologize for a vomit-inducing slide that I created. That was the first one for me. But this, this is about the sewers and whether the sewers are in a private road or a public road. They will be repaired because we are protecting the water, waters of the United States. So where Gladstone and Brunswick and all of the streets parallel come down to Bayside, they will be lined where they go regardless of public or private. If the analysis indicates that that sewer could possibly leak down the slope into Quincy Bay, it gets lined. So in your ward, counselor, in Ward 1, in portions of Ward 2, we are continuously looking at the sewers along the beaches and waterways, Bayside Road, Avalon Beach, any of the Howes Neck components. Between Germantown and Howes Neck, there's a sewer. This money doesn't worry about whether it's public or private. It's a sewer that needs to be competent, needs to not leak, needs to not infiltrate. You're welcome. We're going to actually move to the, the next item on the list that is also, we'll talk about a matter that stems from public property to private property, but will be addressed regardless of whether it's on a public property or a private side. With that, I'd like to hand the microphone over to one of my business partners, Olivia Von Denbanken of Granite City Partners.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Von Denbanken with Granite City Partners. I'm also a fellow Quincy resident. And I'm here today to talk to you about the city's lead service removal program. I prepared some slides for you as an awareness since this is a new program. And I apologize, some may get a little technical with a lot of numbers, but I'm open for questions at the end. Starting with the bigger picture, the city of Quincy purchases their water from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWRA. So the MWRA serves 53 communities and towns throughout Massachusetts. As you'll see here on this figure, the water is taken from the Quabon Reservoir, which is over here on the left, and then it goes through the state, serves multiple different cities, but then comes to the city of Quincy where we are today, where I put a little Q on the screen over to the right. As the Commissioner has already stated, and I just want to emphasize again, the MWRA and the city of Quincy have very high-quality, safe, even award-winning drinking water. It's actually some of the best in the country. This water is lead-free when it enters the city and when it goes through the city's water mains. The city's mains, which are the pipes under the streets, are made of cast iron and ductile iron and do not add any lead to the drinking water. As the Commissioner has already discussed, the city continues to invest annually to improve their water system and water mains and just provide all of us great drinking, safe drinking water. So how can lead enter the water, then? So the city's water mains, as I mentioned, are completely lead-free, and up to this point, there's no lead in the water. However, lead can get into drinking water through the service line that connects your home to the, to the water main if that service line is made of lead. So the water service line is the smaller diameter pipe that connects your home to the water main. And as you can see on this figure here, the water service line actually has two parts. The city-owned portion, which is between the water main and the property line, which the city owns, and then the privately-owned portion, which is between the property boundary and typically enters your house in your basement up into your water meter. Per the city's ordinance, this portion of the service line is typically the owner's responsibility. As previously stated, the city has approximately 24,000 services. And what we're here to discuss tonight focuses on a small portion of those that may contain lead. That's 3% that may contain lead. I want to emphasize that I use the word "may", and this is because 3% is a very conservative number because a portion of that includes a portion of the service line where we just don't have records for the material of that line. So to be conservative, we're assuming that they're lead. So that 3%, which out of the 24,000, that would be about 700 lines. Out of that, 100 of them, we just don't have records for. So the material's unknown, we're assuming lead. And then the other 600, we suspect may contain lead based on records. I should note, of that 600, over 500 of that is the homeowner section. So that means for about, I guess, 90% of that 3%, the city has already replaced the public side during their water improvement program. So the city's required by DEP to remove 10% of the lead service lines over the next 10 years. So using the 3%, and again, assuming that what we know or what we don't know as unknown is lead, that's about 70 services per year. I also want to note that in DEP's eyes, a lead service is only removed and we only get credit for the removal if the full service is fully non-lead and we can verify that it's not lead. So that's private and public side. So in order to do this, we are requesting a MWRA loan. The city's eligible for this loan. It's a 10-year, 0% interest loan. And the work funded through this would be to verify those unknown materials to confirm whether they do or do not have lead. And then any service that we find that does have lead, we plan to replace. So again, that's public and private side. So the $2.5 million that we're requesting will fund the first three years of this 10-year program. This last slide that I have for you tonight demonstrates the impact of the $2.5 million MWRA loan and what it has on the Water Enterprise Fund debt service. So there's been talks with MWRA that the loan may turn to a grant. However, this graph assumes, I guess, worst-case scenario, that it stays the loan. If it does turn to a grant, it would improve what you see here. And again, we can get into this into a little more detail at Finance Committee, but I just wanted to present this today. And if anybody has any questions?
President recognizes Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments, and thank you. I know before we started this new term, back in December of 2023, I put forward a resolution with the lead pipe and to help out some of the private situations throughout the city. Just recently, this past Monday, coincidental, next door to me, a two-family, finally got ahold of the landlord, and the landlord gave confirmation to do the lead pipe replacement. And I went out and I talked to the worker, C Norton Worker out there, and I said, you know, how's everything going? He says, listen, your administration, your city council, the mayor in Quincy, you guys do a great job. You get in front of these things, your proactive approach, and some of your surrounding towns, and I can't get into the names of the surrounding towns, do not take care of these, these issues. This is, this is probably one of the most important things as we move into the fact of cancer rates, kids with autism and all these different components, and the water needs to be safe. So I just want to say I commend, I know this is going to go into committee, but getting out in front of this. And then, and then also, thank you to the Commissioner, Al Grossiello, to, to help out with the lead piping replacement plan. I know you were right out there. And he said, oh, yeah, we're going down across the North Quincy right after we're done with your replacement here, and we're going to do that on the afternoon. So they were out 7:30. They were doing the project. They were done around 12:30, and then they went on to North Quincy. So they were trying to do two in a day. So I just want to say, you know, we've, as governments, you know, city council with, with the mayor and the administration and the department heads, we've got to work together on, in this particular. So I like the fact that you got to tackle 700, and you're going to tackle 70 per year for the next 10 years, and you have a plan in place. And if this was approved, when, when do you start this particular loan process?
We would start as soon as possible. With the MWRA, we have to use the money within 90 days. Not all of, we have to start using it. So we would start designing and then hope to put this out to bid as soon as possible.
So I'm looking on this, one of the slides, Slide 19. It says the property boundary. At the curb stop, that water lines, water service line is the homeowners' owned. And then obviously, if we go back from the sidewalk over to the goose neck and the, the water main, that's where you're going to be doing your cutting? Is that the replacement plan? How do you replace the whole line? Or how do you, where, where do you go into?
So I think it would be a case-by-case scenario because in some situations, the public side is already non-lead. So at that point, we wouldn't need to replace the full service. We would just need to replace the private side. In a perfect situation, when soils allow for it, if there aren't any above, any retaining walls or things like that, we just need a small insertion. We can pull the line, so it's minimal open cut.
Thank you for your presentation, and I thank you for the diagrams here because it's very helpful for the public not only to know what's going on, but how we're going to tackle it and having a plan in place. So I know this is going to go into committee, I believe, with Finance Chair McCarthy here, but I wanted to say thank you. Thank you for coming in for the presentation, and I'm looking forward to the, to the future of replacing these. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Okay, want to just go into the last portion of the presentation, please?
Thank you. The next council order is a transfer request from the Sewer Drain Rehab Account. Now, I'm sure you're all aware, but the Sewer Drain Rehab Account is an account that's funded through developers. They pay into that fund. It's not, it's not an account that's, that comes out of the general fund. This council order is for drainage improvements in the Swannum School neighborhood area. We've had some flooding issues in that area, and we figured this is a very good time while they're doing the Swannum Elementary School to tackle these drainage issues in that neighborhood. We've had a history of off-site stormwater issues in the Mayflower, Hawkins, Standish Road area, Winslow Road area. So these improvements are for Standish Road, Mayflower Road, Winslow Road, and Huckenzav. Portions of the work are to be completed this summer while Huckenzav and Mayflower Road water mains are being installed. Road water mains are being installed. We're going to be adding to the drainage system in Winslow Road, which currently does not have drainage. So we'll be putting catch basins in Winslow Road. If you look at the map, you can see we're going to start over in the Standish Road area, come down through the back of the school, come down Winslow Road, and come into East Squanum Street, which will be probably the second phase. And the second phase will go along East Squanum and to the Outfall or Dorchester. We'll be making improvements to the Outfall, we're enlarging that. That's going to require some permitting issues that could take a little while. But the first phase will be done and be adding 2,200 feet of new and enlarged drainage piping. 20 new are replaced drainage structures and catch basins. We'll be doing trench paving and asphalt repairs, and the 13, the $1.3 million will cover the engineering design, permitting, and construction, along with the details. Once again, this area, we've had some significant flooding, and some of these residents have suffered greatly in their backyards. There's been damage to private property, and so this will help alleviate that. And that will be our request. Any questions?
President recognizes Counsel Harris.
So obviously Huckins leads down to East Squanum Street, and the flooding that takes place, you know, where there's been two, two this year, and I don't know if there was one last year, one the year before, high tide, northeast winds, lunar high tides. So that's, we're doing this. Is there any talk about raising the roads? I know I've spoken with the mayor, raising the roads right at the end of that, so we don't have people cut off. And I'm hoping also for the beginning of Victory Road, so folks in Marina Bay who are shut off on both sides. Is there any talk about that? We're talking about this flooding, but Huckins leads right down into East Squanum Street. Folks want to know, I mean, they want to know what is going to be done, and I'm, I just don't have any answers. Is there any talk?
There is talk. As a matter of fact, the mayor has instructed one of our engineering firms to look at the...
That's great to hear.
Look at that whole area, looking at, you know, raising roads, which would be obviously a great expense, but looking at...
Exactly. We've already raised, we've already raised East Squanum Street, what, 15, 17 years ago?
The mayor has instructed one of our engineering firms to look at this, whether it's a BIRM system, whether it's raising the roads, but it is being looked at, yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, because...
He's actually asked them to look citywide because of other...
And I can't say, I can't give you and your department and the administration enough credit for, for your actions when those folks, those folks got flooded. Everything you talked about, it was, it's during, not, not, I'm not talking about the, I'm talking about the Winslow, the Mayflower area. You folks, you folks did an outstanding job, top-notch. You reacted immediately, and in fact, you reacted before I even knew about it. So I appreciate that wholeheartedly, and please don't, don't, this evening, I don't want folks to think that I'm angry at, angry at the city, the mayor, the administration, or anybody in this room. I'm just so frustrated sometimes because we get bombarded, and there isn't a ward counselor that I don't think has been in that, in the place. I think there, everybody has been, where it seems like, it's like, all of a sudden, we went from COVID to now it's Niagara Falls. And we, I'm just, again, you're hearing my frustration, but I want to make it quite clear that I am frustrated in some, not transferring of some information that I just heard for the first time. But I want to say that the fact that, the fact that it's great that the transfer of the sewer and drainage rehab account, which is funded by the developers, that's, this project will not impact the tax rate, and it will only help the people of Ward 6 for the rainwater runoff of the school property, which, again, what you folks did to help those folks was amazing. You were out there, all your engineering department was, has been a problem on Huckins and especially Winslow, and the different, you know, folks that were affected, pools and so forth. But I'm very supportive of this, but let's, I got a couple of questions, though. How is the work being coordinated with the, how exactly is the work going to be coordinated with the new school? So you said this summer, you're going to do it, so...
Doing water main on Huckins and Mayflower this summer. We're trying to get it, the plan is to try to get this work done when school is out.
Right.
So we're going to, at the same time, we're going to try to do the drainage, once again, when the school is not in session.
Sure.
Because of, as you know, the traffic situation in that area.
Right. I'm just going to give a second for the folks to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, all set. So also, how is the work being scheduled with other DPW and National Grid to minimize the disruption to the houses around the, around the school?
How is work being? I mean, we work with the residents, with any project we do, whether it's water main, we notify them, we, if we have an issue, we're working on the street, we help them get in and out of their driveways.
Which...
We clean the, you know, we make sure that the road is clean when we're done at the end of the day.
Yep.
So we'll be, again, we'll be sending out, you know, when the time comes, we'll be notifying residents and giving them all the information, all the phone numbers, any issues they have, all the contacts for the contractors and DPW, any issue they may run into.
And I, and I did appreciate the fact, we notified folks about the electrical, we're not even going to bring it up, you know, for a while, I don't think. But I actually would like to know, so I can back it up with mailing out a letter as well, so they had two letters, one, you know, if, I know that we had some issues when we had some work being done when we were testing the sewers, you know, it was, it was, it was kind of a, for a couple of folks, a couple of problems that we had to work through. But at least, if I can send a letter, you send a letter. The more letters, the better. This way, nobody can say we're not transparent, we're not letting people know. And, because I had just sent a, Jen helped me send out a letter to, there was about 25 folks that are going to have something that's involved with this school, the law, putting the electrical, the electrical work under, underground, which is, which is a good thing.
And we can, you know, we'd be happy to have a community meeting before we start any of the work this summer.
Absolutely. I think that's the best thing. If somebody doesn't come, well, that's, but as long as we're, we're trying to communicate, that's, that's the key. That's really the key. And I, I guess, and my last question was, how are we going to notify them about the upcoming work? You answered that already, but I really want to back that up myself as well, where not only do you send one out, I'll send one out, and a couple, a couple, I'll be behind you. This way, folks know it's, you know, and some of the folks, and again, the work, for instance, on Aberdeen, a street that, that in Squanum, what you said about how the folks worked with the people that worked there, that's the key. People needing to go to work, people needing to get out of their driveways, your folks were right there, and, and that's just an example of what you folks do. But we just, I just don't, with, with the Squanum School project, especially, in any project, I think for ward counselors, anybody, we should, you should be ready for it, because in my years of eight years now, it's, it's kind of, you know, when you miss something, it kind of blows up twofold, but, and I don't want that to happen here, and especially with this major project that's going to affect a lot of folks. Al, thank you.
I just want to make one more point on the, on the drainage issues and the flooding throughout the city. The mayor has instructed us to look throughout the whole city, to all our, all of our areas that we're having issues. City Engineer Paul Costello has done an incredible job on inundation modeling throughout the city for flooding. We've taken some of those tools and some of those, some of the things we've learned, and again, we're looking now, how can we resolve some of these issues? Whether it be a seawall down at House Neck, flooding in Squanum, flooding over by North Quincy at State Street, areas in West Quincy, it's, again, the mayor has taken, made this a top priority. So just want people to know that.
I appreciate that, Al. So I don't even want this to go to the finance, I want to make a motion to approve.
We're not there yet, but as soon as we are, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Promise.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Of course. Yosa?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Commissioner and team. Appreciate the comprehensive presentation. Madam Clerk, we're moving on to item number three now, please.
2024-036, an appropriation for $2,500,000 MWRA loan for lead service removal.
Motion to move to finance. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number four, 2024-037, appropriation for $1,300,000 Sewer and Drain Rehab Loan for Squanum Elementary School Drainage Improvement.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris, seconded by...
No, no, no.
No, it's a transfer. Yeah. Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Debona. On the motion, on the motion, Counsel Debona.
So this is the 1.3 S&amp;D Rehab Loan for Squanum Elementary School Drainage? Yes, okay. I just want to give echo, you know, this, I know Commissioner Al Garcia would really like this, is I was out Saturday morning, early morning, 9:30-ish, 10 o'clock, Joe Shea from Granite City Partners is out walking the grounds, looking at this particular, what we need to replace in the drainage situation, East Squanum Street, Winslow. So he was out working hard on a Saturday morning, and just want to say kudos to that and thank you for doing that and getting out there. So I know Counsel Harris would love that, so working hard. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Chairman.
President recognizes Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little information on the, on the vote right there. The first two items we moved into finance, the fourth item, and I discussed it with Counsel Harris, that was needed to be done tonight, so they do design work for July. So we had to move on that. So I'm glad we can move on this Squanum work now and get a vote. So that's what that was tonight, just, if folks were wondering why we put two in and didn't put the third in.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. And that's because two of them are approvals. This is just a transfer from the Sewerage and Drainage Rehabilitation Fund of $1.3 million. So on the floor, we have a motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy, seconded, sorry, yeah, Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Devina. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Devine, Counsel Debona, Counsel Harris, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Minton, President Kane, eight members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Number five, 2024-038, appropriation for $1,57,000, I'm sorry, $157 million for district improvement financing.
It's a big number. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Motion to move to finance.
Motion to move to finance made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Number six, 2024-039, Order for Urban Revitalization and Development Plan and Amendment Number Six.
Okay. Have a motion, Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, motion to move into finance in downtown?
Sure. Yeah, motion to move to Finance Committee in downtown and advertise, please. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Number seven, 2024-040, Order Amendment FRP, Quincy Development LLC Land Disposition Agreement.
Motion.
Motion to move into finance. Do I have a second? By Counsel, Counsel McCarthy made the motion, seconded by Counsel Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, last...
Number eight, 2024-041, Ordinance Mending Zoning MBTA Bus Yard at 954 Hancock Street to Open Space.
Motion to move to ordinance. And on the motion, President recognizes Counsel Minton. Did you want to say something on this? Okay. Motion to move to ordinance. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Devine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that is the end of our regularly scheduled program. Approval of previous meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counsel McCarthy. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have utility requests to refer to Public Works Committee for scheduling and advertising, grant a location National Grid Verizon on Field Street, and grant a location National Grid Verizon Fennel Street. Also, traffic requests to refer to Ordinance Committee for advertising, Ward Three, Counsel Kane, add two-way stop sign on Belmont Street at Lincoln Ave.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unfinished business and proceeding...
Pardon? Sorry.
Unfinished business and proceeding meetings. Seeing none, reports of committees. President recognizes Chair Debona.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the vice chair of the Ordinance Committee, I have a few traffics that were advertised on March 21st of 2024 in the Quincy Sun, so a few positive recommendations for the Ordinance Committee. In Ward Five, 20024-28, traffic, add stop sign on Gould Street, eastbound, intersecting with West Elm Ave. Positive recommendation, motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Debona. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Minton. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Devine, Counsel Debona, Counsel Harris, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Minton, President Kane, eight members.
Thank you.
One more, Ward Five, 20024-28, traffic, add stop sign on Gould Street, northwestbound, intersecting with east Elm Ave. Positive recommendation, motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Counsel Debona, seconded by Counsel Minton. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Devine, Counsel Debona, Counsel Harris, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Minton, President Kane, eight members.
Thank you. Chair Debona, President recognizes Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Tonight, we held a public hearing for 2024-027, Grant of Location, National Grid, and Harvard Street and Granger Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Devine, Counsel Debona, Counsel Harris, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Minton, President Kane, eight members.
Does that conclude? Counsel Harris? Yes?
That's it.
All set? Thank you very much. Okay. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Seeing none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Okay, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. President recognizes Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Monday, April 8th, 6:00 p.m. The two items that are on the agenda for the Finance Subcommittee, 2024-30, its appropriation, $20 million. That'll be the capital improvement plan, and also an appropriation of $4 million for the 2024 capital improvement ban in regards to hotel motel tax. Those are the two items, Monday night, and we're starting at 6:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy. So we do want to recognize another lion from the city of Quincy who passed very recently, and that's former Congressman William Delahunt, who is a familiar face around town, obviously a bright fellow who dazzled many a room. This room included the halls of Congress towards the end and latter stage of his political career. Former Democratic Congressman from Massachusetts and Norfolk County District Attorney. He died Saturday at home in Quincy following a long illness. He was 82 years old. And he was surrounded by his loving family in Marina Bay. Former Congressman Delahunt is survived by his fiancee, Julie Pagano, his daughters Kirsten of Dorchester and Cara Delahunt Bobrov of Milton, and two grandchildren. The Delahunt family showed a statement last weekend calling him a cherished father, fiance, grandfather, and former husband, adding that he passed away peacefully. All of us up here, I think, owe a debt of gratitude to Congressman Delahunt, who served for many years gracefully as one of those politicians that knew how to get along with people who he didn't necessarily agree with and bring stuff home to the people he represented. He will be missed, and on behalf of the city council, we pass along our heartfelt blessings to his family at this time. And I believe there is a service that will be this weekend.
Through you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President. Visiting hours for Congressman Delahunt will be 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Friday at the First Parish Church, Church of the Presidents. And the funeral mass will be Saturday morning, I believe, at St. Gregory's in Dorchester.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Debana, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Have a good night.